Almighty God, the source of knowledge and understanding, guide the minds of those of us who are about to take counsel together on matters concerning this county, that in our debate and in our decisions, we may faithfully discharge the duties of our office and promote the health, safety and wellbeing of those we seek to serve, through Jesus Christ our Lord.
Amen.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and a special welcome to all the new members present in this evening. I'd like to welcome you to the 19th Annual and 244th Meeting of Rutland County Council, and we'll start please with apologies for absence.
There are no apologies, Chair.
Thank you very much indeed. Under chairmen's announcements, I have no announcements at this time, but I would like to read the following notice to anyone intending to record the meeting. If you would like to film, blog, tweet or take photographs of the meeting, you are permitted to do so without causing disturbance to the meeting proceedings. A designated area has been set out to allow you to do this. Please be aware that you are not permitted to move outside the designated area, as this may disrupt the meeting. A protocol which governs this activity has been placed on the table for your information. Please also be aware that members of the public who are not part of the meeting have not consented to being recorded, and therefore please do not include them in any recording activity. Thank you for your cooperation. Item number two, announcements from the head pay service.
Thank you very much indeed.
Item number three, declarations of interest. It is my intention at this point in the meeting to exercise my right under procedural 36.1 motions for amendment which may be moved without notice and 55.2 variation suspension of procedural rules to move the suspension of procedural 49.4 for this meeting to suspend the requirement for a secret ballot to take place when the appointments by the council are made. If such a motion was seconded and agreed by a central majority of members present, voting on appointments would be by a show of hands. So may I ask for a proposal please?
Propose.
Thank you, councillor Begging, and a second then.
Will you second, Chair?
Thank you, councillor Begging, and all those in favour please. Twenty-six, you know, Mr. Begging. Thank you very much indeed. Just before we move to the agenda item number four, the election of chairman of the council this evening, I hope members will indulge me by allowing me a few words at your outgoing chairman. I would just like to take this opportunity to say what an honour and privilege it has been to serve Rutland as elected county councillor over the last 10 years, and in particular to be your chairman for the last two years. I have enjoyed every minute of being both chairman and councillor and feel very privileged to have been able to serve our very special county. I would like to thank all of the officers, my fellow members and my vice-chairman, Mr. Parsons, for their support whilst I have been chairman and councillor. Mrs. Briggs, I hope you will feed that back to the other members of staff who aren't present, in particular Corporate Support and Development Control. Having first been elected as a councillor 10 years ago at the age of 25, I am now married and have had my daughter, whilst being a councillor. So whilst naturally I am extremely disappointed not to be back with the world to serve Rutland again, I am looking forward to spending more time with my family and the more in adjusting to having many more evenings free. I'd like to wish all members the very best for the future, and I'm sure I'll be seeing many of you around Rutland. So now if I can ask please for the nominations for the position of chairman.
Could I nominate councillor Ball?
And is there a second for that, please?
I'll give you a second, Chair.
Thank you very much, councillor Ball. Are there any alternative nominations this evening? No? So I may ask please for all those in favour. And against? And abstentions? Thank you very much indeed. Congratulations councillor Ball. Could I just ask for that vote again? I'm sorry, that only adds up to 25, so if I may just ask again for all those in favour please. Twenty-four and two. Thank you, that's two. So again, many congratulations, Mr. Ball.
We'll make sure, to make sure this is better for the next occasion. Councillors, members of the public and officers, I am going to use exactly more or less the same words as the outgoing chairman. It is indeed a privilege and an honour to be elected to serve as your chairman for the next municipal year, the next council year. And it's on an occasion such as this that I'm reminded of my very early education just outside Bath in the West Country, and looking at my job report, it said, and it's funny how you remember these things so clearly, it said that Rutland is the smallest and the fairest county in all the land. And it remains that way today. And I would hope that in our year going forward of deliberations and making various rules, we will do our county part. And in fact, I believe we are just the custodians of this county, and it is our duty within this council chamber to hand it on in four years' time in a better condition if you like. And I'm looking at that across because that is one of the thoughts of farming indeed, that we were handed on in a better condition than it is today. Not to say that it's in a bad condition, it certainly is not, but I think it's a very precious, it's a very special county. So thank you once again, and we will now continue with the rest of the agenda. And I have, I'm going to have to call you back, I think, if I may, Charlotte. The Frat, we would like to present you, it's a very good task, your very first task as chairman is indeed a pleasure of mine, and we'd like to present you with these flowers on behalf of members and the council, and indeed for your excellent record of the last years. And one very important, it's an ex-chairman's badge of honor, which is, I think, could well be the first of many. You are of an age where I'm sure this will not be, I can say that nicely, this will not be the one and only, but certainly it's going to be something to show to your grandchildren in many years to come, but I'd like for you to accept that again. My great pleasure. Thank you. Okay. Okay, so we must endeavour to do this whilst this adjustment is going on. I think as you will have noted from your training, if you need to catch the chairman's attention, it is normally by a show of hands, and of course you will stand when asking questions or giving any comments, and we have this little complication of remembering to switch the microphones on and off. So I think that will particularly come to be quite easy after the first or second meetings. We normally ask for mobiles in Blackbury's to be off as well, because occasionally we do get some interference. I throw in a little spanner in the works and Pat to the veins, I think, will sympathise. I've said, well, we're having all this new technology introduced, are we not, this evening? And does this give any interference? So officers, I'm totally going to check that out before the, for the next meeting. Now on your first meeting, just to confuse matters, and we are going to confuse matters, you have some revised papers in front of you, and they are for agenda items nine and seventeen. It's just really for noting at this stage. So you have revised papers for papers nine, agenda items nine and seventeen. And just to confuse matters a little more, we need to bring a couple of agenda items four, because they are the items that we are going to vote on, which enables the rest of the agenda to flow. So if you'd like to make a note, the agenda will actually run after number eight, we will be taking agenda item eleven, then agenda item thirteen, and then we go back to nine and ten. So we're going to run in order eight, eleven, thirteen, nine and ten. And then slightly, not really confusion, but then you will also have new papers for agenda items eighteen and nineteen, and they will flow in the normal manner. I hope that's very clear, councillor, thank you. So now we will move to agenda item number five, which is the appointment of the vice-chairman of the council about the right to invite nominations for the officer, for the officer's vice-chairman of the council for the minister of the year 2015-2016. That's with councillor Baines. Seconder? Are there any other nominations? Fine, then I take a vote on that, please.
Nineteen? Twenty? Twenty-four?
Any against? Any abstentions? Can I invite councillor Baines to come forward to receive his change of mind? And perhaps councillor, Baines should like to send a few words.
Thank you very much indeed, chairman. I shall be very brief and I look forward to supporting you in any way that I can during the current year. Again, I would like to thank my predecessor, Chris Parsons, for the work that he's done over the past year in sometimes very difficult circumstances, but I don't think I need that to mention, thank you.
So we therefore move on to agenda item number six, the election of the leader of the council. Now at this stage, I do need to just point out that we are electing the leader of the council for a term of four years, and can I have a nomination, please?
To the first, yes, I'll give you.
May I have a second?
Have a second.
Are there any other nominations? No, thank you. So we put that to the vote. One in favour? Any against?
Record it, please.
Any abstentions? Can we just say, sorry, right. Right, congratulations. And we now move on to agenda item number seven, which is notification of leaving the portent to the cabinet.
Thank you very much. First thing I want to say, I'm honoured to be able to serve again. I'm very keen that we've got a very difficult four years coming up, whether it be from change in devolution, whether it be from numerous budgets and reviews that will take place over these next few years, it is important that we work together. We might always agree with each other, nor should we always agree with each other, but in a constructive way, I hope that we can work together to actually deliver the sentiments given by other people. In terms of the cabinet, I would like councillor King to continue and continue as deputy leader. Looking at what we're facing and some of the challenges we've got, looking at the children's area, I don't think it's possible for a new person to take on the whole of the children's portfolio holder. There are two key areas that we need to focus on. I would like councillor Wobbe to take responsibility on the education side of the portfolio, and councillor Postle to take over the safeguarding side of it, which will include SEN and those sorts of areas from it. Those are two big areas. We identified that we needed to do more in terms of quality and getting our schools back into the top quartile, top 10%. So that's a significant task, Mr. Wobbe, working with the schools. And then we have, we will have an Austin inspection of our safeguarding area sometime in the next six to nine months. And it is very important, having seen what happened in Leicester City and other notable places, that we are prepared and will be delivering the service we expect. In terms of adult social care, it will be councillor Clifton, who has the experience with Shaw's Trust and proved over these last few months, since he's been a councillor in the last council, that he will take that forward. And then finally councillor Atha will have the portfolio, county done by places under David Brown. Mr. King will do the places under Mr. Bolton and resources. That is the cabinet's core constituents here.
Thank you, leader. Item eight on the agenda is the appointment of the deputy leader, but as we know, as you will see on the agenda, it is for noting. So councillor King is appointed to be the deputy leader. Perhaps I should give the opportunity to councillor King to say a few words if you wish, but it's hard to.
He's not the wrong chairman, so I'll stick with it all.
That's fine. Sometimes with a new chair we have a new agenda, so that's absolutely fine. So we now move on to agenda item eleven, so we're running, as I said earlier, between eight, eleven and then to thirteen, which is the establishment of voting places on the scrutiny panels, which is as set out before you. And the name, I think, really, I would be my supposer to take this on block. I've heard reasons why you're not helping me talk about that block. Okay, then I would just need a proposer, which I'm prepared to propose and seconded by the leader. But I have all those in favour. And the abstentions? Any against? Sorry? Abstentions? Abstentions. And if we put in it, you know, a lot of things will happen to you later, so say what. Okay, so that's item number eleven, so we now move on to agenda item number thirteen, which is the establishment, which is the establishment of the standing committees of the council, and again, it's set out in front of you. And the ordered to risk committee obviously are five, chief officer appointments, four on that committee, six development control and licensing, twelve places. We have appointments in the bill, seven licensing, ten health and wellbeing, with two voting places. So again, with your permission, it would be my intention to take those on block. From the chair, I'm prepared to propose that. I need a second. Second. Can I say all in favour? Any against? Any abstentions? One abstention. Thank you. So that is actually carried. So we will now revert back to agenda, we will now revert back to agenda item number nine, up on my place, and that's the allocation of seats to the political groups, which covered in pages one to ten, and here I will be handing over to the monitoring officer to take this through.
Thank you, Chair. Just to remind, it's a latest report that's been taken tonight, the report 95/2015, and that's to reflect the formation of political groups in the council. So just a very brief description from me, there's a lot to detail in the report. We've just agreed the number of voting places on each panel. The purpose of this report is to allocate seats to those parliamentary committees based on the political balance of the authority. So the seats must be allocated as shown in section 5.2.1 of the report. And this, this also includes a bridge preferences for seats, which is set out in section 6.1. So we recommend, this evening, one just be about agreeing with the seats, and recommendation four is to reappoint the independent, the parish representative, sorry, to the parliamentary committee. The council approved a fairly lengthy process last year to appoint these parish representatives. Both councillor Alec Convey and councillor Simon Ayden were reappointed to their relevant parish councils. Both indicated that they're willing to continue with their jobs. So the proposals for the council to approve those points, thank you.
There is in fact one small addition, and that is for the two parish representatives to continue, and I think that is councillor Convey, the second one. Councillor Ayden, right. So those will, we need to take a vote on that. The other three points are in fact for noting. Okay, so, sorry, we would take a proposal and a second for items one to three. Propose, councillor Begging, second. Sorry.
One more, chairman, as we're all councillors on a similar standing, same standing, I cannot see the political balance for councillors, David and myself, to have two points on a children's panel. Can someone explain the political balance in that?
I'll hand it over to the monitoring officer to take it through.
Thank you, Chair. The political balance and the way that that's calculated is actually set out in paragraph 2.5 of the report, and it's based on the overall political makeup of the authority. So the paragraph 2.5 does describe and explain that 52 of the available eight seats are allocated to the Conservative group, as this is 65.38%, and this is the same overall makeup as the overall council. So the calculations follow. The calculation of the board that describes the legislation, and we're simply following that closely.
Councillor. If I may, there is a group of two councillors, and there are two independent councillors, I cannot see the difference. Could you repeat that, sorry, for the monitoring officer? We're talking about political balance, well, in fact, there is a political group, the Liberal Democrats, with similar number as Mr. David and myself. How come the independents have to take the two from certainly a power I have never sat on or have great knowledge of, and yet the Liberal Democrats get away with one seat?
I think this situation, I'll just revert to our monitoring officer, of course, we have three political groups now set up within this council, which we have notified, and of course then we have two independents, which is yourself, councillor David. So I'm not sure if we can accommodate the question you are asking, I think.
I've tried to answer the question, I think it's been asked. The table at 6.1 shows the total number of seats for each of the three groups that are now formed on the council, and the total number of seats for the remaining non-aligned members, of which there are now two. And you can see that the Liberal Democrat group and the others, as they're called in this report, both have six seats each. As I've said, it is all based on the calculations of the overall makeup of the authority. I'm sure that answers the question, if you want to re-clarify.
I don't want to drag this out, chairman, however, I've certainly not been consulted. I'm guessing the Liberal Democrats have not been consulted, or perhaps I'm not completely that point on. It seems unfair to me that if the Liberal Democrats have been consulted and two independents have not been consulted, that we're not playing with a straight bat.
Councillor, thank you, councillor.
Thank you, chairman. I think in terms of question, perhaps it's the monitoring officer with a different way. I think I understand that for a query.
The resources scrutiny, is this for information?
It is for information, chairman. I think if you look at the resources scrutiny panel, you'll see that the independent group has taken three places and left no places as a result for the two independents that councillor Gallo is referring to, and therefore I think by default that there's two places been left on the people panel. So I think if the monitoring officer didn't address that question in that way, I think you might give the answer to that, I'm looking for.
Thanks, Chair. Yes, the three groups have indicated their preferences of where they take their seats on council, the size of the group is probably the most straightforward way to explain it.
Right, thank you for that. So therefore, what I'm again proposing from the chair is that we take items one, two and three on block, on my supposed time, second. Second, then, taking, again, all in favour? Yes, I am, yes. Abstentions? Against?
Record it, please.
Thank you very much. And so therefore, I'm now moving to item four on this particular item, to agree the reappointment of parish representatives to councillor Convey and Ayden. And there is a little change I'd like to introduce here, and that needs to add, I'm sure that you'll agree, for the period. And that needs to add, I'm sure that you'll agree, for the period of this council. So we are appointing councillor Conbe and Aye for the period of this council. May I have a proposal? Councillor, thank you. Seconder?
Second, Chair.
Can I have all in favour?
It's the honest chair, thank you.
Thank you very much for that. So that deals with agenda item number nine. And now we move on to agenda item number 10. With that on to the normal agenda, which is the appointment of the chairman of the scrutiny panels and the scrutiny commission. And the council has requested to appoint the chairman of the leaders of the scrutiny panels who will be in this for the year 2015, 2016. So the first one is for people, adults and health scrutiny panel. May I have a proposal?
I propose councillor Steadman.
A seconder? Are there any other nominations for this particular chair? No? Then I will put that proposal second to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Abstentions? Thank you. So we move on to people, children. May I ask for a nomination?
I would propose councillor Dale.
And a seconder?
A second, Chair.
Are there, are there any other nominations? Thank you. Then I ask for all in favour? Any against? Any extensions? Thank you. So councillor Dale is elected. So we move on to the next position, which is places. And can I have a proposal for places, please?
Councillor Lammy.
Do I have a seconder?
Have your second, Chair.
Are there any other nominations? Right, may I have a proposal in favour of this proposal? Against? Any extensions? Thank you. So that's helpful. And now the last one is nominations for the chair of resources.
Can I propose councillor Waters?
Do I have a seconder?
Have your second, Chair.
Are, are there any other nominations? Therefore, we go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Abstentions? And we go. So that deals, that deals with agenda item number 11. We now move on to agenda item number 12, which is the appointment of members of the scrutiny panels. As was in front of you, we elect elected members of the most important cabinet chair. On that, we're going to take the names as. So the names are already circulated in front of you as per the scheme. So I think we can go straight to. Yes, we can go straight for the non-aligned on that. Right, so that's agenda. Okay. So we have for the people, adults, health and scrutiny panels, and this is part of what I think councillor Dale was raising. We have a vacancy for people, adults and scrutiny panel of one place. So I need a proposal for the vacancy.
Can I propose councillor Gale?
Councillor Bailey is proposing councillor Gale. And I have a seconder?
Have your second, Chair.
Councillor King. Any other proposals? So we have councillor Dale. We did say Dale, yes. And actually, thank you.
Did you say?
Thank you, Mark, that's fine. And all in favour? Sorry. Yes, it was, did sound pretty clear from here, sorry.
So you can hear clearly. I said councillor Gale.
Thank you. Councillor Richard Gale. All those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you. So we move on to people, children scrutiny panel, where we have two vacancies. Can I have a proposal? Ah, okay. So yes, there is, sorry, there is a change here. Because we've just appointed councillor Dale, then there is now only one vacancy. So there's a change of the papers in front of you. Can I have a proposal, please, for the vacancy?
Sorry, Chairman, I'm not quite.
On the people, children scrutiny panel, we started out with two vacancies. But because we've just elected councillor Geoff Dale as the chairman, there is one vacancy.
If Mr Gale wanted to, I'd be happy to support him.
Mr Gale.
Absolutely. It's difficult for any councillor to stay apart in all scrutiny panels. And this is one I've spearmed here of for the last twenty years. I'm well aware that we're a new council, a new council, and we will all be working together. But however, I feel that this is one I cannot contribute to. I do intend to attend as many of the other three meetings of scrutiny, whether I'm a member or not. But I, I, I would not want to take this position.
But that's absolutely fine, councillor Gale. We can actually leave that as a vacancy and therefore move on to the next basis scrutiny, which again. If you could just turn your microphone off, sorry. It's all right, we will. And so we move on now to places scrutiny panel, where again the names are nominated for that. So basically, we have one vacancy. And can I ask for a proposal for that vacancy, please?
I've proposed councillor Dale.
Thank you. You're clear at that time. And can I have a seconder?
Have your second, Chair.
Seconded by councillor King. Are there any other proposals, please? Right, can I therefore go to the vote? Give those in favour? Any against? Any extensions? Two extensions, thank you very much. And that vacancy is two. And the resources scrutiny panel is in fact, according to my paperwork here, which we just, uh, we have a proposal. We've named already, so there's no need to refer back to that. So, sorry, yes, we do need to retract on when we were looking at the scrutiny commission. I'm afraid I skipped through. We do need to appoint the chairman of this scrutiny commission. From one of the four chairs of the scrutiny panels, which has been already appointed. Do I have a proposal?
Okay.
Do I propose any? Yours, sir? No, on item 10.
I would, I would like to propose an amendment. There are four people on the scrutiny commission. So they need to have one in charge of the other three. May I suggest that the four of them sit down and work it out and potentially take it in turns if needs be, to do it rather than a one single person. That is a proposal.
Do I have a seconder?
Chair, I'm happy to second, if the leader is prepared to accept, so then that is rotated.
The leader is happy with that. Okay, so we, so we have a proposal now. The situation here, we have a proposal on the table, but we also have an amendment. So we need to vote first of all on the amendment, which then becomes the substantive motion. And then we take that vote once again. So there'll be two votes, actually. Well, we could do it as long as it's substantive. Okay, so we understand the proposal, yes, and we have a seconder. And I have, I'll put all in favour.
Twenty-six members?
Sorry, what? Twenty-six, so that was unanimous, so that, that. So we're now going to pick up where we left off, and that is on agenda item 14. Chairman and vice-chairman of the council committees. To let the chairman and vice-chairman of the standing committees of the council. And we have, the first one is the audit and risk committee.
Mr Chairman?
Can we take?
Sorry, Mr Chairman, but we didn't do the substantive, did we?
I'm sorry. I, I, that was my understanding, that my monitoring officer is telling me that in this particular instance, we can take it.
Oh, okay.
Well, ask for clarity, just for the second.
Thank you, Chair. Just to clarify the procedure, because the amendment that councillor Bailey proposed was seconded and voted on, and there was a substantive vote in support of that, we don't need to agree back to the original proposal, so that is now complete.
Happy with that, councillor. Thanks, McGale. So, okay, so we are talking about proposal for the chair of audits and risk committees, please.
So I propose councillor McTough. And do you want a, 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 a second?
I would, well, I'm just going to ask for a seconder. Seconder first of all.
Have your second, Chair.
Thank you. And we can take the vice-chair at the same time, or? Well, I'm doing not, I think we need to do it second. So we have a proposal, we have a seconder. All in favour? Against? Abstentions? Thank you. Now I need a proposal for the vice-chair.
Councillor Lammy.
Seconder?
Have your second, Chair.
Thank you. Any other proposals? All in favour? Can I take the votes in favour? Against?
Zero.
Abstentions?
One, two, three, four, five.
Thank you. So that's helpful. Now we move on to the elect the chair of the conduct committee. May I have a proposal?
I propose councillor Dale.
Seconder?
Seconded, Chair.
Any other nominations? Not, we go straight to the vote. Those in favour? Against? And extensions? And now we need a proposal for the vice-chair.
Councillor Goode.
And a seconder?
Have your second, Chair.
Any other nominations? Okay, we go straight to the vote. All those in favour? And against? Abstentions? Thank you. We move on to the chair of development, control and licensing committee.
I would propose councillor Dan.
Seconder?
Have your second, Chair.
Any other proposals? We go straight to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Abstentions? And now then, I'm moving to appoint the vice-chair of development, control and licensing.
Councillor Lammy.
Seconder?
Have your second, Chair.
Any other proposals? So, yes, councillor.
Councillor Parsons, please.
Councillor Parsons prepared to accept. Can I have a seconder? So therefore, we go straight to the vote. The, the person, any?
Yeah, point of order. Maybe as we wrote, uh, contest here.
Yes, you can, you are quite right. We can go to, if each person would like to speak, I think we're going to say.
You just start over.
For a period of three minutes, excuse my point on that. So I think you ought to say, councillor Lammy, would you like to just say a few words as to why you want to undertake this role? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair. Yes, I've been a member of the planning committee for the four years on my time as councillor. I've enjoyed it immensely. Since I know there's a lot of national changes going forward with planning. And I believe I'll be able to support the chairman in making sure the planning committee is going forward for the future. There are a lot of new members on it, and I would like to be able to offer some of the experience I gained as a new member four years ago to them and just continue my contribution on a committee I'm privileged to serve on.
Thank you, councillor Lammy. And councillor Parsons, who just wanted to say, thank you, thank you.
Excuse me for not standing. But I've been on the planning committee for the past nineteen years. Going through a lot of changes with the political, uh, things coming in with policy. The civil policy is coming, and that's going to be very help, you know, instead of the 106 agreements. And I just feel that my experience on planning throughout the heart county shouldn't just be used as a bad venture. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will go straight to the vote for councillor Lammy. All those in favour? Any against? Sorry, big problem. So we just go straight to the vote for, for councillor Parsons. Any extensions, then? Well, all we can say is that it didn't come to twenty-six, but I had the two. Okay, no need to do that. So that's, that's. So we now move on. Sorry. Sorry. So councillor Lammy was elected on fifteen of the votes. So we now move on to the employment and appeals committee to elect a new chairman. And I have a proposal, please.
And to Goode.
And seconder?
Seconded, Chair.
Are there any other nominations? Thank you. So therefore, we can go straight to the vote. All those in favour? Any against? Any extensions? Thank you. And now we need to appoint a vice-chair. And I have a proposal for vice-chair.
Councillor Dale.
And a seconder?
Have your second, Chair.
Thank you. Any other proposals? So therefore, we can go straight to the vote. All those in favour? Any against? Any extensions? Thank you very much. So, seven. So that says that, that carried. And that those two carries. And now we move on to the licensing act committee. I need. I need a person for the chair. Councillor Waters. Councillor Waters. Do I have a second there?
Have your second chair.
Are there any other persons? No, therefore we can go straight to the vote. Councillor Waters, all those in favour? Against?
One.
Abstentions?
Two.
Okay, so councillor Waters is elected to that position. And we need a vice-chair. May I have a proposal? Councillor Conde. Councillor Conde has proposed, seconded.
Second, Mr Daines.
Councillor King, thank you. Any other proposals? None. Okay, so we go straight to the vote. All those in favour? Against?
Zero.
Abstentions? So councillor Conde is elected to the election. So, item B on this item is that we need to agree the election of the chairman and vice-chair of the chief officer appointments committee to be resolved by the committee each time it meets. And I think we should, as a charity, take a vote on that. Can I have a proposal? Councillor Daines, second there?
Have your second chair.
Any other proposals on that? I think we just take all in favour. Thank you. And then item C on that agenda is to note that the chairperson of the health and wellbeing board will be elected member of the Rutland County Council or a member of Rutland County's cabinet as set out in the terms of reference. So I think that includes that. So we can now move on to agenda item number fifteen. And this is the really made, as set out by the group leaders. And item A is to appoint the remaining members of the following standing committees. Sorry.
Your mind frame was wrong.
No problem. Thank you, councillor Ockley. I will try to do better next time. So it's to appoint the remaining members of the following standing committees. Councillors in both the chairman and vice-chairman have been elected in four of the above. So on the audit and risk committee, we have three elected members, which are allocated by groups, and they are Mrs Valen Macduff, Mr Edward Baines, Mr James Lammy, Mr Kay Waters and Mr Gail Waller. So that's just standing. Okay, I think probably the easiest way is monitoring officers to say, I refer you to the sheeps before you, which are in, or the conduct committee. And what we're going to do exactly, take those as red. Can we take those as red members? Are we happy with that? And then we move on to the next section, which is the development, control and licensing committee, where we have the elected names, but then again, rather like earlier in the agenda, there is one vacancy. So I need to ask for a proposal for that vacancy, the name for the development, control and licensing committee. Do I have a proposal for that vacancy? From the non-aligned?
Councillor Dale.
And can I have a second there?
Have your second chair.
Okay. Is the? So I have a proposal and a second there for councillor Dale. There's no agreement there, councillor. There's no agreement there. Are there any other nominations? Councillor Ockley.
All right, nominate councillor Gayle.
Nominate to the head. And the second there? Councillor Parsons, thank you. So going back to our standing rules, I will ask each nominated person to perhaps speak for up to three minutes as to taking that position. Councillor Dale.
As those who've been on the council before know, I've served twelve years on the DC. I was four years on the previous council, district council on it. I'm Rutland-born and bred. I am passionate about my county, and I would like to stay on DC. Thank you.
And councillor Gail, likewise?
I too have been an member.
Sorry, councillor Gail, will you take the other mic? Apologies, thank you.
For many, many years, probably eighteen or nineteen years, or something around that, I think. I too am born in Redwood. I too am passionate about our county. I have been a vice-chair, a previous, previous councillor. Through my personal experiences, I've had a considerable interest in it over the years. And I'm currently a member, or I was currently a member at last council. And I would hope to be able to continue that. If we're a council that's got the shared positions around, around the councillors, then I feel that I'm the right person for the job.
Thank you very much for those two person sessions. So now we can go straight to the vote. So I'll ask those in favour for councillor Dale. Any, any against? Any abstentions? Right, so we can move then to any votes for councillor Gayle, please. We have, we call that is two tip. Any abstentions? One. Two. Okay, thank you. I, I should try to declare all those two particular names in going forward, but they are indecipherable. Thank you. So councillor Dale is, councillor Dale is elected. Thank you very much. Employment and appeals committee is as the votes in front of you, as is the health and wellbeing board. So I now ask you to turn over the page to the licensing act committee, where again, we have the various norms set out, but there is one vacancy, one or more. So can I have a proposal to fill that vacancy? We don't have to have a proposal. We can leave that vacant as previous items, and we can fill that as we go along. So that includes item fifteen on the agenda. So we now move to item sixteen. This is the scheme of delegation. It's pages eleven to sixty-six within your agenda papers. And I will move to the monitoring officer to introduce this particular paper.
Thanks, Chair. The constitution sets out a point for the council to read the scheme of delegation of each annual council. So there are two parts presented for you to read this evening. The first is part three of the constitution, which is responsibility for functions. And this sets out the responsibilities of the various decision-making bodies of the social party. There is a slight amendment to page fourteen, which the appointment of the police officer, as I pointed out as we said, it doesn't exist in that system anymore, so that simply needs to be deleted. The second part that I ask you to read this evening is part eight, which is the scheme of delegation. And this sets out how the various functions are delegated to the committees of the council and to council officers. Again, a correction to page forty-four, it still refers to the audit commission. The audit commission no longer exists, so the reference there should be to the public sector audit appointments limited, which will be amended. Both formally agreed in the quiet this evening to both those parts of the constitution. And as we have to send it into the period of a new council, it would seem to be an opportune time to, to renew this year's delegation fully and to support new members to understand this, it's quite an empty document. So the, the support to the constitution will be working through by the two office officers that work for the coming year. Thanks, Chair.
I think, again, just for clarity, are there any questions that you may need to ask on that? If not, I think we can go, councillor King.
Chairman, I, I have requested a review of these, as I recognise we're ten new councillors. There's a lot there that they won't understand what they're going to end up putting on a passus ever since we've been aware of anyone who'd like to refresh ourselves. So I welcome what the monitoring officer said, but I would ask, it's been said a year, as my office has mentioned, that we try and do it within six months. Again, if the people get to us by next year, if the monitoring officer thinks that's fixable, then I, I personally intend to support that.
So I think the fairs are happy that we will incorporate that into the wording. I have a proposal, I mean, I propose that we accept them today, and that they are reviewed by the constitution, making room within six months. Can I say, councillor King, the second there?
Sure.
Okay, so we can go straight to the vote. All in favour? Thank you. So therefore we move on to item seventeen. This is the programme of meetings to that of the year, or two thousand and fifteen, sixteen. And I think we have one or two minor changes to the original papers, but you have the newspapers in front of you. And what should the lady do to ask to say a few words on this, please?
I think this is an important, for new members. This is an important document, because it does give you when the dates are for the rest of the year. So you will know when you are committed to appearing. And I think that's the key thing for this. It's an important document to keep by your title and be able to say, right, that's what I'm committed to. Spooky committee among the council meetings for development. And I would prefer to be accepted.
May I have a second there? Sorry, councillor. Are you asking a question, sorry?
I'm quite prepared to second the, the leader. There was a time we, we used to have a monthly calendar in addition to this, and it was very, very, very helpful. It's something I asked for a number of occasions we reintroduced. In fact, it's the day we'd like to, because.
I did actually take this up with the monitoring officer. We've got ten new members. I think it's very important that we do have a regular monthly thing, so that we know what's happening and it reminds us. So I would happily say that we should, as part B, we should send out a monthly list.
I think we can. Councillor, thanks.
Look, I've just got a question. Are we also going to make this electronically live to our new tablet?
I'll, I'll refer to the monitoring officer. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, we are just currently looking at the best way to automatically populate councillors' diaries with all the meetings for the coming year. So all notes by you, and I'm going to do that over the next few days.
Any other questions? If not, I think we have a proposal and a second there. We can go straight to the vote. All those in favour? Mr Daines, Chair. Thank you very much, Michael. So we now move on to, again, item number eighteen. It's welcome to representative outside organisations, and I go to the leader.
Can I suggest that we do this page by page? You have your, your document here. There are recommendations all the way down. The one that I would ask you to make a decision on is the charity of Carlton Hale Hospital, Hayes Hospital. And Mr Gale had represented this one for a number of years. But I, before I make any comment, confirm Mr Gale will still to be on that.
I suppose, dear Chairman, I, I think it's, I'd sort of someone else to take on the role.
It's going to be the super junior, councillor Daines. It is absolutely fine going down to this, but I would just point out to members that when we get to page number two and number three, we have more nominations than there are positions, so we look to go to the, we can take those as they were.
We need to go to a vote on Carlton Hayes Hospital, as there are. There are three people have expressed an interest in that position. There's councillor Foster, councillor Waller and councillor Waters.
Yes, you are, you are quite correct. And I think following the normal procedures for this evening, therefore, I will invite councillor Foster first of all to speak to the following chairman. Kevin, I, I drew from that chair. Thank you, councillor Waters. So councillor Waters is withdrawing. Yes, so therefore councillor Ockley, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. They, having been given the portfolio for the young people at risk in this county, I feel that the nature of the charity Carlton Hayes Hospital, they appear to be an organisation to which we should turn for assistance to help those vulnerable youngsters. And therefore, I think it's logical that as holder of the portfolio, and I should sit on the board only as a pillar to the Carlton Hayes.
Thank you, councillor Foster. Now we go to councillor Waller.
Thank you. Mr Gale has reported back on his charity very well to us over the last number of years, and has pointed out that residents of Rutland have not regularly benefited from what is in fact a charity to support people with mental health illnesses. It's not specifically a children's charity. I have a great interest in mental health, both intellectually, in prior employment context, and also through personal experience within my own family. And those are the reasons why I put my name forward for this charity.
Thank you, councillor Waller. So now we can go straight.
May I just brief? May I brief you about?
If it's on the point of information, yes, on your basis.
It is predominantly for mental health, not, not youngsters. And since the sale of the largest asset the charity had, now it's a portfolio of about three million pounds. And it's, it's really meeting two or three times a year to elevate grants to organisations that support mental health and other disciplines.
Thank you, that's very useful, councillor Gale, thank you. So we have two nominations. We can go straight to the votes now. All those in favour of councillor Foster? And those in favour of councillor Waller? And just to be correct for the vote, abstentions? Thank you. So councillor Foster is appointed. I now return to the leader to continue on with this. Thank you.
On the second page, there are two areas in which there are more people than the applicable places. If I could actually go to the Rutland Access Group, I am sure that they would be only too willing to have the three nominees that we have down for there. And I would propose that at this stage, I approach the Rutland Access Group and that all three are put forward.
I think we can just, also, councillor.
Thank you very much, Chair. I am certain, having served on it for the last period of time, that they would be thrilled if there were three members. And also, I'd like to add, if I may, with your indulgence, Chair, the next meeting of this group is in fact Wednesday of this week at ten thirty a.m.
Thank you, that's, that's extremely useful. I don't think we need members meeting to take the vote on that. I think we will apply, perhaps, to the government council, that would be particularly good, so we can take that. I think councillor Betty, I need to take you back to the Oakham Town.
Yes, I did say I would take it lightly out of order, Mr Chairman, you're right. Thank you for that. That brings us to the Oakham Town partnership, which has three members on it. One is the relevant authority holder, and we have councillor Clifton, councillor Bird, councillor Gale and councillor Waters, expressing an interest for the other two places.
Yes, so we have four names for two, sorry, the councillor, I thought two, okay, councillor.
As a current member of the Oakham Town partnership, I know that there's a shortage of members on that partnership. And perhaps before you go to a vote, some approach should be made to the chair of that organisation and see if they're prepared to take four. Alternatively. Alternatively, any individual member of that group, of those four names mentioned, could apply to the partnership to be a member, not as a councillor.
Thank you for that. I'll bring in councillor Waters, I think, as well, please.
Chair, that would be perfectly acceptable to me, if not acceptable to the council, then I would be drawn.
Well, I think there is probably a slight dilemma here, because we need to be aware of the constitution of that body. Councillor King, you've got a point of information.
Yes, Chair, and I'm going back a long way in the constitution of the Oakham Township, I'm living one, in that originally it was set up with three members of the two town councils and three members from the county council. But councillor Dale is absolutely right. Oppingham certainly has taken up the opportunity of a councillor who didn't win a place through this body on it, in taking on a place as a member of the community or a member of the business community. I still think it's wise that we point out to additional places as former members, and then others can apply. And I think councillor Gale is right, I don't think they are oversubscribed, but I know there are other people who are going to apply for places on that partnership.
That's really going to be my direction from the Chair this evening, because we need to check matters out. I think we should proceed with appointing two members this evening. I can't see any reason why it is possible that we can bring this back to a future meeting. And what I did just say to support is that we need to report two members this evening. And I think I need to follow the normal procedures. Would you like to say a few words, please, councillor?
Thank you very much, Chair. Obviously, being elected as representative for the Oakham ward, I think it's important that we have full representation on there. Obviously, looking at colleagues, I think that probably is essential and shared. I think I can bring quite a lot to the partnership, but I also take on board there is the opportunity, as I am actually running a business in town as well. So, I think I would like to represent, as part of the council, and I think as a cabinet member as well, that I actually support the town partnership.
I think councillor Clifton, now move to councillor Bird.
Mr. Chair, I've lived in Oakham on and off for thirty-five years, and in that time I've been involved with many groups within Oakham. And I'm passionate to see how it can develop as a town. I've run my own business in and around Oakham through all of those years as well, so I'm well aware of the business needs of the town. I already know some of the people who are involved with the town partnership, and would welcome the opportunity to work with them to further the development of the town in the best way possible for it.
Thank you.
As I said earlier, I am currently a member on the Oakham Town Partnership. I'm born and bred over there. But I think the two previous speakers have perhaps given us the answer. They both talk about being in business in the town, and I'm sure the Oakham Town Partnership would welcome with that business experience. So, although I'm speaking for myself, I'm also speaking for the two that could be appointed other than as being as a councillor. So, we do have an opportunity for all four to serve on the Oakham Town Partnership, should you wish to do that.
Thank you. I think, just to be absolutely clear, in light of the information that I get given out, are you still withdrawing councillor Waters, or are you...
Yes, Chair.
Thank you very much. So, therefore, we go straight to the vote. Those in favour of councillor Clifton?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, twenty.
Councillor Bird?
Two.
Yes, I'm sorry, you can vote for only two people. I think that was understood, because we had two, it wasn't others. So, apologies, you...
Chair, let me take the first vote again.
Okay. You can vote for two of the three names only, thank you. So, we take the first vote again. All those in favour of councillor Clifton?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, twenty, twenty-one.
Councillor Bird?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, twenty, twenty-three.
And councillor Gale?
One, two, three, four, five.
And the mathematics do actually arrive, but the intention does not apply to the two. Yes. Councillor Clifton and councillor Bird are appointed to that. Thank you very much. So, back to the leader.
And the last page, there are two. One is the Stamford Hospital Development Advisory Council. Councillor Parsons has informed me that he is withdrawing, and unfortunately, they do not seem to recognise that not everybody is able, body, unable to get upstairs to a meeting. So, there are, there are two people for this position, councillor Conde and councillor Waters.
And what are these bills, and how does councillor Parsons...
That's what I just said, councillor.
You can't do it with the public.
Yeah.
Okay. So, we have two names for one position. So, again, as per the format of this evening, councillor Conde, would you like to speak, please?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I'm very interested in this position. Stamford Hospital, this moment in time, is a distinct hospital, it's in how it develops, and how it remains as a facility for our community, especially in the east of the county. I have a lot of personal experience and family experience of this fine facility, if I hadn't left for all. But I do believe that I have the commitment and the experience to ensure that this council is best represented on the committee itself, and I will do my very best to represent us all, as well as representing our constituents.
Thank you, councillor Conde, and councillor Waller.
Thank you. My reasons for putting my name forward for this particular body are similar, in fact, to councillor Conde's. The vast majority of people in the ward I represent see their health needs being met via the Peterborough Hospital Trust, of which Stamford is part, not Leicestershire, and it's simply a question of geography and transport. And I know that the hospital is used very, very widely, particularly by the older members of the community I serve. And I see this as an opportunity to represent the needs of my constituents, as well as representing the needs of Rutland more widely. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Waller. We can go straight to the vote. All those in favour for councillor Conde?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen.
And for councillor Waller?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
And just for the accuracy of the votes, extensions?
One.
Two? Two extensions. Thank you, so councillor. Yes, councillor Conde is appointed to the position of Stamford Hospital. Thank you. I think we now move back to the leader for the Oakham Town Partnership.
Once on this page, there are three places on the Oakham Town Partnership, the relevant portfolio holder, and then we have three people who have expressed an interest, to be honest, councillor Stevenson, councillor Burkitt, and councillor Oxley.
So, the portfolio holder takes one position, so we have three names for two places, following the same format. I will ask, sorry, councillor Oxley, I missed you there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Whilst I am overjoyed to see my name on the paper, I've actually served on the Oakham Town Partnership as a business representative for the last six years, since its founding, in fact. And I also am very pleased, I must say, to see councillor Stevenson has put her name down for Oakham First and the town partnership, and we've long waited for a bridge between those two organisations. So, I would not want to create any problems, so I withdraw.
Thank you for that, councillor Walther. So, therefore, that position is filled with our councillor Stevenson and councillor Bird, in addition to the portfolio holder. And therefore, I think that concludes that particular item of the year. And I think I'll now remove item nineteen on the agenda, which is the appointment of champions, working groups, and other fora. We go to the leader. Thank you.
Indeed. This is the opposite of the last paper. On the last paper, we had more people for positions. This is the opposite. The particular ones I'd ask you to look at, one is somebody to accompany, Mr. Oxley, who has held the position of the joint, on the Joint Safety Committee. It is an important committee in the development of these buildings and the safety of the operation around the county that we're responsible for. So, I would very much like to ask if there is anybody who would wish to volunteer for Mr. Oxley. If people think they're interested but don't know enough about it, we can bring this back again to the next meeting.
Councillor Walther?
I am happy, just to get a quick resume of the work...
That would be very useful.
Very, very. It's a set of obligations, and it's a bridge between the council, the council employees, and the security management team. And it looks at a number of different questions, regards to the general wellbeing and health of people who've worked for the county council. And it is, as I say, it's very important, has a very important role to play. It's very interesting, I've been on it since I first was elected onto the council, and it's been a very rewarding, so I wish people to give it to the board.
Thank you. That's councillor Foster. I think that will address the list.
No, there's, we also need, on the Oakham Senate Joint Management Committee, Dale is sitting there in glorious isolation at this point in time. This is a momentous year, potentially, for this committee, as the mayor of Oakham has announced in his programme that they will be aiming to take this over this year. Therefore, actually, this is quite an important role to support councillor Dale in actually working with the town councils in that particular transaction, and therefore, it would be very helpful if he could have some support from eight members.
Are there anyone who would like to join? Councillor... Councillor... Thank you very much for offering, councillor Waters. I think we will therefore take those two names forward, rather much we can. Thank you, and thank you both. I'll just let our monitoring officer make that adjustment. And I think councillor Bailey, the rest of the list runs for that particular item. So, that concludes agenda item number nineteen. We now go to, again, item twenty, questions from members of the council, number seven, Chair. Thank you. Lessons of the lessons, number seven, Chair. And item number twenty-two, matters referred to the council, by matters of the council, number seven, Chair. And item number twenty-three, any other urgent business? Nothing at all? Take a moment.
Did you find it, item nineteen?
I thought, I thought we had councillor Waters. What have I missed? Oh, right, indeed. Sorry, you are right. It is, we need to appoint the champions, and I return about a few minutes. Thank you.
Could I propose a slight amendment to this? A lot of people are very new to the council at the moment, some have been on longer than others. Those are quite important roles, if people want to take them up. But I don't think a lot of people around here will know exactly what we're looking for. I know Mr. Waters is very keen on the idea of having a replacement for what used to be the SPAR management board, where we met, Mr. Waters, councillor Stevenson, and myself, met with SPAR and the tenants to ensure that they, the promises that were being given by SPAR were fulfilled. But it was also a very useful point of contact with our tenants as well. I think that this is a good opportunity for the future, for somebody to take this on so that when tenants have some issues, and it's not just Oakham, it's Oppingham, it's in the villages, and quite often, it's more difficult in some of the villages, because they tend not to be with SPAR. They tend to be with other registered social landlords, and if they are in the village, they tend to be in twos and threes. So, what I would ask, Chair, and if we could defer this for one month, so that everybody has an opportunity to think about this, and I will continue talking with councillor Waters, which goes to his interests.
And just for priority, councillor Bailey, are you to take those three items?
Defer the item all for one month.
Or three items of that particular section, to be brought back to council with a paper of explanation, and then some debate, or we can go through that? Are members content with that for one month? I think that sounds a very good idea. So, we will take that as action, and thank you, councillor Waters, for pointing that out. So, I will return to any urgent business of which there was none. Therefore, thank everyone for their attendance, and it's one of those reasons for the actual passing, because I would close the meeting at eight twenty-nine. Thank you.